I would like to call the February 26, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting to order. Will anyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carrie.
Present.
Chilson.
Present.
Hutchings.
Here.
Nelson.
Present.
Parker.
Yes, I'm here.
Whackler.
Present.
And Representative Kincaid cannot join us tonight. You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda Consent Agenda? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you.
May I have a second?
No second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I would like to withdraw Action Memorandum 2025-002, a request for an excused absence for the February 26th meeting for myself.
Are there any council objections to withdrawing Action Memorandum 2025-002 from the Agenda Consent Agenda? Seeing none, it is withdrawn.
And I have one more motion, please.
Go ahead.
I would move to amend the Agenda and Consent Agenda by adding Lay Down Resolution 2025-008, authorizing the city manager to apply to the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation for a loan increase from the Alaska Clean Water Fund for Phase II construction portion of the BioSolids De-watering Replacement Project, and that is coming from the city manager.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Carey. Are there any council objections to adding Resolution 2024, excuse me, 2025-008 to Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing and hearing none, Resolution 2025-008 is added to the agenda. Are there any other changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Seeing none, will the court please read the Consent Agenda?
February 12, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes. Ordinance 2025-005, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $2,400 in the Saldana Regional Sports Complex Capital Project Fund for a donation received from the supporters of the Saldana Field House, sponsored by the city manager, public hearing on March 26. Ordinance 2025-006, accepting grant funds from the United States Department of Agriculture and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $1 million in the Saldana Regional Sports Complex Capital Project Fund for the Saldana Field House project, sponsored by the city manager, public hearing on March 26. Resolution 2025-006, requesting that the State of Alaska make a meaningful increase to the base student allocation for public schools, sponsored by Chilson and Hutchings. Resolution 2025-007, reallocating funds for investment purposes amongst the short-term, midterm, and long-term accounts, sponsored by the city manager. Resolution 2025-008, authorizing the city manager to apply to the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation for a loan increase from the Alaska Clean Water Fund for Phase II construction portion of the BioSolids De-watering Replacement Project, sponsored by the city manager. That is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item just read by the clerk? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom, and... I see no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak, the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda is amended as back before the council. Any objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing and hearing none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are as amended as approved. Next item on the agenda is presentation with prior notice. First one will be Project Homeless Connect by Jody Stewart. And I don't see Jody here.
She's got a pincher.
So is this Jody's replacement? Okay.
My name's Leslie Rohr, and I reside in the city of Saldana, and I'm really proud to be a part of Saldana, and I just want to thank you guys for your participation in the efforts of our homeless coalition. So, this is just a quick overview of our 2025 data. And I'm sorry, Jody couldn't be here with you tonight because she'd do a much better job. But, so our... Next slide.
There you go.
Okay, yeah, I was just... To connect people to services efficiently, effectively, that would otherwise be difficult to access, to build a more compassionate community, to reduce stigma, and provide data. And the next slide shows our organizational structure, and a big thanks to the city of Saldana because your efforts and contributions to the homelessness coalition allowed us to do strategic planning and really put some bones to our structure and have helped us to move forward in meeting the needs of our community. And the next slide is, we had a packed house at the Project Homeless Connect event. We had 31 or 32 vendors. We couldn't fit another person in there. The next slide is one of the most popular people. We did 43... Yeah, 43 haircuts that day. So that's something that people really appreciated. Next slide. I know these are kind of hard to see. And that one, maybe I'll... Or I may not have that one. Okay, so this shows 2012 through 2025. The blue line are the actual participants that filled out an intake at the event. The red line are the number of household individuals that were included. So we had 115, actually had 116. One person refused to fill out the intake. So out of the 115, there were 185 family members connected with those 115 people. The next slide. This one shows the breakdown between males, females, and disabled. And it's really sad to see. The green line is the disabilities, and the majority of the people participating in our event have disabilities. That means they are living with much greater difficulty than otherwise normal, healthy person who might be experiencing homelessness. The other thing is we see an increased number of females, and we have pretty much... We often have more female homeless individuals than we do male, which is not the national standard.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you mind? Just because it's on this one, and you brought up. Among the disabled, is it relatively same by gender, or is there one gender that is significantly more?
You know, I am not sure that we actually broke that down. We could, because I'm sure, you know, we still have all of that data. We could go through and see. I would say it's probably higher in the male category being disabled.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So the next slide is... Blue line indicates people are staying with friends or family. The red line is they're in emergency housing, and the green line is they're living someplace that's not meant for human habitation. And again, this year, having more people living in uninhabitable places is alarming. And I think our sheltered people have been pretty consistent over the past three years, and part of that is because we have such a robust sober-living group here with several houses that accommodate quite a few people. And then the next slide.
Vice Mayor Parker, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Ms. Rohr, so for the people who are living in, like out the road at the shelter, are the shelters full?
Yes.
And there must, is there a waiting list?
There is. I was just going over that tonight with my staff because we have... We've had several new people come in this week after house fires and other disasters that are seeking shelter.
Go ahead.
A follow-up, just because you brought it up with people coming in this week. With the change that we're seeing with federal funds and grants, have you seen an increase in people coming in as a result of the uncertainty if they're going to be getting assistance?
Yeah, so I haven't seen an increase in the number of people. I have seen an increase in the urgency of people who have already submitted their applications and are waiting for approval and payment. And our payments for our grants have been held back for... Well, we're a week off cycle now, and we'll be able, they released them for Friday, I think, is when they release, so we'll be able to take care of those that are most anxious right now.
Just to follow up on that, are those federal grants, or?
It's federal pass-through.
Are you foreseeing any problems in the future with those?
It's really hard to anticipate. Homelessness is a very touchy subject in Washington, DC, so how it plays out is anybody's guess. So our next slide shows reasons for homelessness. Loss of job is the blue line, of course, domestic violence, the red, and other is, of course, the largest. And that can be anything from loss of income, loss of hours at work, evictions, divorces, death. There's many things that play into that particular number, and the other is really hard to quantify or qualify. So, next slide. So this one, again, is interesting, showing the blue line, first-time attendees. And I think we were over 40%, well, no, excuse me. It was 33% were homeless for the first time. And by far, everyone finds the services that are available that day helpful. And one of the biggest things, and kudos to all of our vendors and our volunteers, everybody feels appreciated, respected, and like they're treated with dignity. The next slide. So our 25, 2025 point in time count. The question was asked for January 27th, where did you sleep last night? And this count is done across the country, and everybody asks the same question on the same day. We do have kind of a 10-day window when we can collect that data from people that are known to be homeless and come to us for service, but all numbers have to be reported and calculated into the HUD database by February 10th. Project Homeless Connect is honored as a best practice model for HUD, and our program has grown since 2012, and we do a really good job of trying to connect our neighbors in need with their resources they need. Next slide. The next slide. So first-time homelessness is 33%. Two to three times homeless, being homeless, 21%, and four or more times, 29%. For Jordan, I know this is of interest to you. People who had to move due to seasonal rentals. And that was 16% of the people who filled out applications that day.
Is that a data point that you just started collecting this year, or?
Yes.
Okay, I'd be curious to see the year-over-year trends as...
Yeah, no, at your request for more information, we added that question.
Thank you for incorporating that. That's very helpful.
You're welcome. So 75% stated if an emergency cold weather shelter existed, they would use it. Primary needs reported, of course, are food, clothing, and employment. Secondary needs, transportation, utility assistance, and vehicle repairs. And I would add to that list, affordable housing. The next slide. So some of our highlights, one of the things that we were really happy to have this year was veterinarian from Saldana Animal Hospital. They saw 15 dogs and one cat. They gave 11 dogs vaccinations, but a total of 43 pets. Owners got resources and supplies for 43 pets. So the veterinarian was pleased with how the day went and plans to be back next year in hopes that more people, knowing that he's there, will bring their animals in. 115 individuals participated, I told you, 185 community members. 49% reported this was their first Project Homeless Connect. 20% were between 18 and 34, prime employability. 12% were veterans. 12% slept in the car the night before. 37% have been homeless for more than a year. 24% reported their last permanent address as being Saldana. Primary reasons for homelessness was either illness, injury, or other category. And 51% reported being survivors of domestic violence. Next slide.
Quick question, if I may. That's a lot of data that you're gathering there. Do you have a statistic on how many people that attended completed the full survey, or do you require the full survey to be completed to come through the door?
The whole survey is done, actually, there's an intake process, and they sit, each participant sits down with an intake specialist, and they go over the entire intake.
Excellent.
Yeah. So this was recently published by HUD, and it shows the cost of rentals or the wage one needs to earn to be able to afford a rental. And I just, $28.61 is what's considered a housing wage for the state. And not very many of our people make $28.61. And the next slide shows, this is a breakdown of the Kenai Peninsula numbers for hourly wage to afford a two-bedroom fair market rent is $25.02. And two-bedroom fair market rent is $1301. Annual income needed is $52,040. And full-time jobs at minimum wage to afford a two-bedroom is 2.1. So when you add all the other things in that go along with that, if you have two working parents and have to pay for childcare, that makes it extremely difficult. And our last slide, I believe, is on the Shelter of Hope. So this cumulative data was as of the 19th of February. And since we opened, we have served 228 adults, 59 children, 36 pets, and 54,000, over 54,000 meals, and 18,652 bed nights. But you can multiply those bed nights by the number of people in-house. Currently, we have 18 people in-house, so there's 18 more bed nights each night since the 19th. And the next slide. Thank you to our sponsors and everybody who made this event possible. And that includes the city of Saldana. We have enjoyed having the ability to use the sports center, but we really look forward to having the field house next year so we can spread out a little bit and offer some additional services such as foot care and many health screenings, like blood pressures or blood sugar checks, and to be able to expand some of the other services that we already provide.
Any questions from the council? Thank you very much for your report.
You're welcome.
We'll be happy to see you in the field house next year. We're all looking forward to that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie.
We hope you come to the grand opening that we're going to have later this fall.
Moving on to the next agenda item is public comments and presentations. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Is there a red light on? Okay, well, that's good enough.
Okay, it wasn't actually lit. Okay. Rebecca Heinzberger, and I've been here before. And unfortunately, it's the same subject. I'm concerned about the situation that happens every summer in the park. And you have these resolutions of the city for adult businesses that are in brick-and-mortar buildings that include activities such as male and female impersonators, as qualifying as adult cabaret. And all your ordinances protect, basically, the general public from viewing such activities. B2 says no business like this should be within 500 feet of a church or a public place of worship, private school, daycare, or a park. Of course, this takes place in a park. And I'm, these were created before any events like this started to take place in the open air in Saldana. There's been, I toured the booths and things that were there. They didn't do anything stage performance that was questionable like they had three years ago, but some of the people that are cross-dressers use the restroom, which could be a problem with children using the restroom. And some of the booths were a little on the questionable side. There were some, you know, completely innocuous ones, but the fact is, you know, the park, the whole event has become almost a statewide event. People come from the valley. They come from all over down here. It's becoming bigger and bigger. And the thing that's changed between when I was here before and now is that now we have an administration that says that there is male and female and nothing else. So that's stirring up a lot of controversy, of course, but the executive orders have even said no public, or no tax funding, federal tax funding for entities that get that funding that will promote this kind of culture. So that's the change. So that's the change that supports what I'm here for. So I would like to see Soldatna's legal counsel look at this and see if it can be adapted for open air. Because these resolutions were created for a building. And now this is not happening in a building. It's happening in an open air. This addresses some pretty extreme, much more extreme than what goes on in the park. But still, male cabaret, impersonate, female impersonators, that's what is the problem.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you again for your comments. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised there. Next item on the agenda is Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives from the borough and/or the state that would like to address the council? Mr. Cox.
Tyson Cox, Borough Assembly, District Four. First off, I want to thank the council for recognizing that education is not just a state or borough issue, that it is a community issue. And that's coming from me, not necessarily as a representative, but even as a parent. I very much appreciate it. I think our local legislators are watching. I, after our meeting last night where we did something very similar, I received some texts and calls from some of those that were watching our meeting. So they are watching what we're doing. They they do see these come in, so it's much appreciated. On that note, just because that was what you guys had up tonight, I didn't know if you're gonna, we're gonna end up bringing it up or changing it or anything. I had a copy of ours with me because it hasn't gone out to you guys yet. The only thing I wanted to mention, you can read the original version online. I don't know that it's been, as of this morning, it hadn't been changed yet. So if it has been changed now, there are two amendments that were added to it last night. It was this afternoon. Well, if I can, I will just let you guys know what those two amendments were. One was brought to us by the mayor and it said the KPB consistently funds over 95% of allowable maximum local contribution, which is significantly greater than comparable municipalities across the state. KPB's local contribution has kept pace with or exceeded inflation while the state's funding has not. And so he had asked that be added. I did, I did add it. I was the one that put in the amendments, but it was a suggestion by the mayor for that. The other suggestion was in our section one. It had stated that increase the base student allocation indexed for inflation as well as strategic investments in teacher retention, student literacy, and school choice options. One of the assembly members brought up that they would like to say public school choice options because they want to be very specific that it was still for the public schools and not for any other kind of voucher program or something like that. So we did increase, or we did include that. And that's really all I had for tonight. That did take up most of our meeting last night. If you want to see a bunch of kids get up and speak and speak very well, you can go back and watch that. There were eight or 10 of them that got up and spoke, so that was pretty cool. So.
Any questions for Mr. Cox? Seeing none, thank you very much. Next agenda item is public hearings. First one is ordinance 2025-002, accepting grant funds from the Alaska Police Standards Council and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $11,445.2 in the general fund to attend the Alaska Law Enforcement Training Academy, introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the adoption of ordinance 2025-002, accepting grant funds dealing with attending the Alaska Law Enforcement Training Academy.
You have a second, please. Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is stated is a grant from APSC and it applies to our officer who is in training at the academy. If you remember years ago that the state fully funded all officers attending the academy, that is not done any longer. However, there are times that there are grant opportunities and this was the grant opportunity for this police officer. We will be playing, applying for another grant for another officer who will be attending the academy as well.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, which is ordinance 2025-002? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on that ordinance? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom and there's no hands raised there. Having no one who wished to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, I just have one quick question for the administration. The amount of that grant, how much of it percentage-wise covers the wages for that individual being at the academy?
I don't believe it covers any of the wages. Is that correct? Okay, it does not cover the wages. This is for the the training itself.
Okay. I will call for a vote on the motion.
Nelson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance 2025-002 passes on a 6-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2025-003, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $10,000 in the general fund for a donation received from Deborah McCarthy, introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I move to enact ordinance 2025-003, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $10,000 in the general fund for a donation received from Deborah McCarthy, introduced by the city manager.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our librarian is here this evening and she will speak to this.
Thank you. So this is actually the third year in a row that we have received a $10,000 donation from Debbie McCarthy. I happen to know she's also donated the same amount to the Kenai Community Library and I just wanted to express our appreciation for her very, very generous gifts to our community.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, ordinance 2025-003? Anyone here in the audience? Seeing none, take a look at Zoom. I see no hands raised there. Having no one wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Vice Mayor Parker.
As the city librarian said, want to thank Ms. McCarthy for her donation. And what is different from this donation than others, most of the donations we give for the library are through friends of the library and this is a donation strictly to the general fund for the library. So I again want to thank Ms. McCarthy for her donations over the years and very much appreciate it.
Anyone else? And I'd like to add to that also that thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Greatly appreciate it. We have a great library here and it's even getting better. So we'll call for the vote.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance 2025-003 passes on a 6-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2025-004, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $311,825 in the utility fund and the utility system capital improvement fund and authorizing the city manager to execute sole source contracts to Veolia in the amount of $265,000 and to Catchamac Electric Company in the amount of $18,478 for the wastewater treatment plant ultraviolet UV disinfection system upgrade project introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Mr. Chilton?
I'll move to enact ordinance 2025-004.
Second, please. Thank you, Mr. Carey. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. This evening, our utility director, and you may recognize him as Robert Hayes, has joined us and our new utility director, but has been with the city for a long time and is well versed in our equipment. And he brings this forward.
Thank you. Just to give a little background, the UV disinfectant system uses ultraviolet, ultraviolet light to treat the wastewater treatment plant effluent before it leaves and goes to the Kenai River. The current system is over 20 years old and at end of life. Due to the age of the system, parts are no longer manufactured and making it extremely, extremely difficult to repair and keep in service. And we are able to source a new system from the same company as the original at a fair price without, while utilizing the same footprint and with minimal design changes to the building and the flow channel. And we're also able to use the same systems integrator to install the product. And this equipment has been designed and quoted with redundancy to greatly reduce the possibility of any interruption in service and will be in service for a good number of years.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, ordinance 2025-004? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on that ordinance? Seeing none, take a look at Zoom and there's no hands raised there. Having no one wished to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Carey? No, sir. Vice Mayor Parker.
My first question you already answered. I was curious about the lifespan of these and you said it was 20 years for the existing equipment. Would you anticipate, anticipate a similar lifespan for this new equipment? Or it potentially extended because it's newer?
Well, no guarantees, but I hope at least 20 years.
Okay. Good to hear. And then also, I did a tour of the facility a couple of years back. It was fascinating to see the processes that we use there and as Rob reminded me he was there. And I thank you for the work that you do and congratulations on your new role as director. Playing some good hands.
Any other council comments? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Did we go up for a competitive bid on this project?
We did some preliminary calls for bids, but the company that we originally got the equipment from was able to reuse all of the same drawings and all of the same engineering to custom make something for us at an extremely low price. So we didn't have to get all of that redone and to manipulate the building in any way.
Anyone else from the council? Seeing no further comments, we'll call for the vote.
Carey?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance 2025-004 passes on a 6-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is new business and I believe we got down, lay down resolution 2025-008. That was in the consent. So we're moving right along to the next one, which is the Action Memorandum 2025-003, determining the fiscal year 25 cycle two mini grant award introduced by the city clerk. Mini grant applicants presentations, five minutes per presentation. And Project Homeless Connect is first up and Kathy Gensel will be making that presentation.
Hi, Kathy Gensel. I live here in Soldatna. I'm not sure what else I can say besides the presentation that Leslie did. If anybody has any questions, I would love to answer them. We do use the funding from the mini grant to help purchase gift cards. And actually, this year, we we decided to give more than $5 of a gift card. So we went up to $10 thinking that somebody could take a gift card to Arby's and hopefully purchase a meal for $10. We also purchase shower, showers and laundry at the wash and dries for both Kenai and Soldatna. And each, each person that attended the event received one of those as well. So that's what we use the, the $1,000 for the mini grant for.
Any questions for Ms. Gensel? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next presentation be Soldatna High School Girls Soccer. And I'll be introducing Kimberly Powell, who I've known for a few years, representing Soldatna High School Girls Soccer.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Powell, as Paul mentioned. And I'm here on behalf of the Soldatna High School Girls Soccer Team. We are a D2 high school soccer team that actually won the championship for the first time back in 2023. With that, you know, we, we run a really good, hard program. The girls work their tails off to be able to to achieve many of their goals. We wrote up a grant in the hopes of having some funds to assist us with purchasing new goals, new nets, new uniforms, to assist with just the onset of referees during our tournaments. I mean, we're looking at thousands of dollars. It is a big travel year and I know the grant doesn't go towards travel. So the funds that we have already raised are going towards the travel. We're going to Southeast for a few days. We're going Anchorage for a state and so forth. You know, so we're looking at thousands of dollars and every little bit helps us be able to achieve those goals that we, the girls have worked so hard on. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your comments. May I have a motion to approve Action Memo 2025-003, awarding the fiscal year 25 mini grants to Project Homeless Connect and Soldatna High School Girls Soccer? Ms. Park, Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I move to approve Action Memorandum 2025-003, awarding a $1,000 mini grant to Project Homeless Connect and a $1,000 mini grant to the Soldatna High School Girls Soccer Program.
May I have a second, please? Mr. Carey, thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Anyone here in the audience? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom and there's no hands raised there. Having no one else who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, are there any objections to approving the Action Memo 2025-003? Seeing, hearing none, action item, Action Memo 2025-003 is approved by unanimous consent. Moving on to the next agenda item, as mayor's report and proclamations. I don't have too much to report. I will, I was in Juneau last week, in my room most of the time with pneumonia. So I will pass the the buck down to either Vice Mayor Parker or the city manager to report or Mr. Chilton to report on what took place down there while I was in a hotel room. So next item on the agenda is council reports on boards and commissions and there are none. And reports from the city manager.
I do have one. Planning out, planning it, I apologize, Chamber of Commerce, if it's okay if I go ahead with that.
Oh, somebody forgot to add it to the agenda.
Okay. Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors met on the 13th of this month. Fairly light agenda for the meeting. Couple highlights, though, that are relevant for the council. The big news is this was made public this week, but we have finalized the hiring of a new executive director for the Chamber of Commerce. So Heidi Sorrell will be joining into that role for the, for the organization. She's an established member of our community and has a lot of experience with the state of Alaska doing projects and construction. So a lot of community engagement relations management. So I think she'll be successful there. We're really excited to have her on board and be able to, wouldn't say stabilize, but solidify the, the operation they have going there and continuing to do all the good they do in our community. Additionally, some of the events that they've been putting on, so Frozen River Fest, that was done last month and in the last month has been very successful. The board did make a decision to issue a letter of support for our Soldatna Memorial Park Wayfinding Project. So that's going to be coming our way. And then additionally, they put on the scholarship fair this last month and that was wildly successful. According to the staff, it's the best one they've done to date, very well attended. A lot of vendors there, a lot of opportunity for scholarships that are put out for our kids in our community. And then lastly, speaking of our kids in our community, the Soldatna Chamber this year is going to be partnering with Soldatna High School to launch a, a job shadow day, similar to what Kenai High School has been doing in, in Kenai for years with the Kenai Chamber. So this is very exciting to see this moving forward. It's going to be March 26th. I'm actually going to be taking one of the kids as a job shadow at my work on that day. And it's exciting to see all the other community members coming forward to get kids out from Soldatna High School and just see all the different career opportunities we have here locally. So that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Chilton? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item? Did I forget you? Well, I thought I said that once, but okay. We'll give you a second chance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were just conferring about who's speaking on what with Juno and all the other things going on. I'll start on Juno and of course the vice mayor report as well. I really felt like the, most of the conference, there was some focus on several items, first being the federal funding and then the impacts of lack of federal funding, the cuts going on and how it affects municipalities. BSA, thank you for that resolution. BSA was definitely a topic and continues to be at this time. The PERS defined benefits versus defined contribution, and there are four bills moving that are addressing it. We'll see what the outcome is. DOT continues to be a big topic and, you know, really discussing the impacts on the state. Senator Lyman Hoffman, who has, I believe, been a senator or in the legislature for 30-plus years, if I remember correctly, has stated that he felt that this legislative season and this time in Alaska history is one of the worst times he's experienced with Alaska finances. So that was pretty sobering, but I would just say that, you know, with everything, there's an opportunity, and I'm really thankful that here in Saldana, we're less reliant on federal funding. In fact, we have very little federal funding, and we'll continue moving forward. Today, there was a meeting, the tourism committee, the KPB Tourism Committee meeting, and it was shorter than last time. But that board, if I, the committee will have a report to the Assembly by April 30th is what the enacting resolution states. So it'll be interesting to see what recommendations are made to the Assembly. That's it for me then, I'm going to report.
Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item again, which is public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom, and there are no hands raised there. Next item on the agenda is council comments, and so I don't forget, we'll start with Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, no comments tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Whackler?
I want to reiterate again, thank you for the donation to the library. It's a wonderful organization that I think that it's a wonderful asset to our city, and I love that people see it in their heart to support that. And thank you for presenting both of you that received the grant. I love that the city can support these small grants for initiatives that help our community so immensely. So thank you and have a good evening.
Ms. Hutchings?
No comment.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank all the people, and again, this is very much part of the issue of volunteerism, which we need, that we're involved with Homeless Connect. There are hundreds of people who participate by providing materials, providing time, providing, again, their expertise, and then obviously, I want to thank also, and they'll never hear this because it's the nature of being homeless, but I just want to thank them as well. We need them to, again, allow us to assist them in being part of our community as a whole. And again, we are all stronger when each element of our community is made better. And so I just want to thank all those involved with Homeless Connect. Thank you.
Mr. Chilton?
I'd like to thank our representatives from Project Homeless Connect and the Saldana High School Girls Soccer Team for coming out tonight and having put in applications for our mini grant program and moving those dollars into our community to support the people that, you know, do good things and see all the good things happen out there with those. And I'm grateful that we as a city have a program as schools it is with the mini grant program to do community good and get the dollars out there to support it. So all great things.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney, and I would concur with the comments of both council member Chilton and council member Carey regarding what the attributes of both our ladies soccer team, our girls soccer team at, excuse me, it's so high, and also all the work that is done by Project Homeless Connect and their partners. On a different note, there's a couple of things I want to cover. First, I will talk about the municipal league meeting, and we were in Juneau last week from arriving Sunday afternoon and leaving Friday, and it was a week of meetings that started Monday with a board of directors meeting for municipal league. And we had a number of presentations, but one of the things that came away was the comment that the state is broke, and the state is not only broke financially, but the state is broke in many other aspects. When you look at the administration of programs, when you look at how people are interacting. So I hope in the coming years that we're able to not put Band-Aids on it, but actually put it, repair it, and suture it and heal it. We've got a, we've got a long way to go. It was interesting on Tuesday when we heard from Legislative Finance Director, the state has money and financially we are not broke as a state. He said, what is broke is the political process. There is a way for things to be fixed, but it's the politics and the people that are interfering through the process. So again, I hope that, you know, we're able to repair that and we're able to come together and again, start to grow as a community. When we convened, and there were over 100 people from communities from Dutch Harbor to Baruupviabek to Ketchcan and all communities in between that convened in Juneau to hear from legislators, and we heard from the Senate President and the Speaker to the minority, the Senate Minority Leader, the Senate Rules Chair, the House Majority Leader. So we had a great cross-section of legislators that were providing us with information. The three priority areas coming from Alaska Municipal League are, and the priority budget areas are public safety, the reimbursement on community assistance, which goes to all communities around the state, organized communities, I should say, and then increasing school funding. That was an absolute statement that was made, and there were a group of 10 mayors that went up to the Hill on Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday, when there was a joint House-Senate Education Committee, and there were 10 mayors from Tuksek Bay to Ketchcan and all points in between that were up testifying to this joint education committee on the need to increase school funding and the impacts that it's having back on their communities. We also were fortunate that Congressman Nick Begich III was, and came to AML and made a presentation to us and listened to community leaders. That's kind of a summary, and then council member Chilton and the city manager and myself were able to also have individual meetings with Representative Russ Bruffridge, Representative Elam, and Senator Bjorkman, and share with them our legislative priorities and answer any concerns or questions they may have from the city of Saldana. So that's kind of a recap of AML and our week, and like I say, it was a very, very long week. And as president of the Alaska Municipal League, it kept me busy and on my toes the whole time. The other, the other item I want to, I want to switch from, and this is one of these places where the community is coming together, and there, we had a ordinance introduced tonight to accept $2,400 from the Friends of the Fieldhouse, which was from the campaign of a couple years ago to pass the grant so we could start construction on the field house. That passed, so, and the field house will open this fall. There is a group that has come together and will be incorporating through bridges, this is 501(c)(3) as the Friends of Saldana Fieldhouse. And it is a wonderful group. They will, they had their initial meetings. They will be coming to our work session on April 9th, when we talk about the status of the field house, where things are at. So it is good to see this group coming together, and their purpose will be similar to Friends of the Library, to raise funds, and they will identify and whether it's, you know, grants to individual groups that will be using the field house that need financial assistance, that will be decided by this group as to how to distribute the funds, but their overall objective is to raise money, but to make sure that the field house is open to everyone here in the community. And that if, like with Project Homeless, somebody doesn't have the money and can't afford to go walk the track, or their kids can't afford to play in, play soccer, there may be through the Friends of Saldana Fieldhouse an opportunity to help. So those are my comments, Mayor Whitney.
Next item on the agenda is executive sessions, to receive advice and provide direction to the city attorney concerning the Supreme Court decision, City of Saldana versus State of Alaska Local Boundary Commission, AS 44.62.310(c)(3), matters which by law municipal charter ordinance are required to be confidential. In accordance with Alaska Statute 44.62.310(c)(3), attorney-client communications are matters which by law municipal charter ordinance are required to be confidential, therefore may be held in executive session. May I have a motion to enter into executive session? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I move to enter into an executive session to receive advice and provide direction to the city attorney concerning the Supreme Court decision, City of Saldana versus the State of Alaska Local Boundary Commission. The executive session will include yourself, Mayor Whitney, council members, the city manager Bauer, Public Works Director Cornelius, city attorneys, and the city clerk Blankenship.
May I have a second, please? Thank you, Mr. Carey. Are there any objections to convening into executive session? Seeing and hearing none, we will go into executive session. Once the council returns from executive session...